Let me call this meeting to order. Welcome, to all of you, to our council meeting. Today is 9/11, a day of very much significance. Ms. Sarcisi, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Darrell?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanekin?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
And Ms. Tully?
Here.
All right. I would like everyone to stand, please. I'm going to ask our council president, Dave Engel, to say the Pledge of Allegiance, after which I will say the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indelible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, today is a day that will live on in infamy. Today is a day that we have to remember what America is all about. And yet, today, I saw more write-ups about more terrorists and more attacks on our country. Dear Lord, please, don't let this happen. Take care of our people in the city of Macedonia, on this council, and in the world. It's time for this kind of stuff to stop. Recently, we had the passing of two very, very good men. And I say they were very, very good because they worked for their communities. Some of them are short-earned, but not these two. They were there a long time. One is Dick Barrett from Sagamore Hills. Dick Barrett was a fine politician. He was a good friend, and I'm going to miss him. Carmen Consolo died. Carmen was mayor of Macedonia. Now, I kind of know what killed him, I guess. But Carmen was a fine man. So, if we may, just take a moment of silence and reflect on all of this. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the regular meetings of June 12th, July 24th, the public hearing of August 28th, 2014.
I think, excuse me, I think Ms. Hanekin needed to make an amendment. I didn't change?
Oh, I thought you would change.
If you'd like me to just change it, because I did record it properly. I recorded it properly here. I didn't transcribe it properly. If you just want me to change it, that'd be fine.
Yes, I would prefer.
The, um...
There was an error that was in the minutes that was provided last night.
And I will just change that as it was properly occurred.
Right, and then you can provide another copy.
Yeah, I did. I didn't know how you wanted to handle it, and I didn't want to change it. But I did this right, I didn't do that right.
We just recorded the vote wrong.
Right, that's okay, fine, perfect.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the regular minutes of July 12th, excuse me, June 12th, July 24th, August 28th, 2014, as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
I abstain from the August 28th public hearing.
All right. Now, the next section of our meeting, we have public comments. We ask all those who would like to speak to come forward. We have a microphone here for you to talk into. We ask that you keep it related to city matters, please. And we also ask that you limit yourself to five minutes. And we are keeping track, because tonight, we have quite a few people who'd like to make comments. So, I'm going to start with Sue Metzl.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Sue Metzl. I live on Smoke Rise Drive. I come before you tonight as a 36-year resident who has devoted many hours to the welfare and betterment of our city. The recent changes to the way our city council and governing bodies as a whole have left my husband and I quite perplexed and dissatisfied. Why does the majority of our current council feel such a burning desire to be in control of situations they have no business controlling? Our current setup of commissions, such as planning, ZBA, finance, parks and recreation, have all been doing their job well for many years. Nothing is broken. Nothing needs fixed. Yet, some members believe they are better suited to decide issues such as addressed by their ordinance number 82, and I quote, "Approval of council will be necessary for such structures to be permissible." You, as council members, are overstepping your bounds. Your job is not to decide zoning issues. That is the job of the zoning inspector, the building department, and, if needed, the ZBA. Mrs. Hanekin, I want to ask you one question. Why did you come up to me at the recent senior luncheon after our BZA reversed our decision for Mr. H with the condition of a safety inspection and thanked me for passing this?
Because I was appreciative that you passed it, that's all.
But now, you've turned around 180 degrees, and with Dave Engel's help, you drafted this new legislation because Mr. H refuses to let the safety director inspect his barn. How can we determine, if the barn has a safety issue or not, if the owner will not allow the inspection?
Would you like an answer?
Go ahead.
This was something that was in play concerning a policy change with regard to considering structures that already had conforming structures with them, a home or something. And just like in the Our Lady of Guadalupe, where they took away the rectory, but they still have a very nice garage there, it's a longer-term issue with the policy, not with an individual decision. That's all, really, that's all.
Sue, did you ever have a complaint on the Lady of Guadalupe structure?
No.
See, that's the difference.
It's not your apples and oranges, I really believe. Okay. Let me figure out where I was here. Okay, it appears to me, and many others, not just myself, that you are trying to tailor this legislation for one resident. In Section 3 of your legislation, you declare an emergency measure, I'm quoting this, starting with the word "declare," "an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the city of Macedonia," unquote. You and I both agree that safety is of the utmost importance. Yet, why won't you enforce your own ordinance and stand behind the proper authorities who are just trying to do their job? I believe our other 10,000 residents, give or take a few, I don't know how many were up to, but they would appreciate your focus, going back to the many priorities of helping the mayor run a city which welcomes new people and businesses. I also believe you need to allow the department heads to be in charge of the decisions that they make. They are being paid to do their job, and you must let them. To sum up, I would like to say, while I admire your enthusiasm for your job as council members, you also have to keep uppermost in your decision-making, what is right for the majority of the residents, not just a select few. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next is Terry Hudak. Terry?
I want to make an announcement that we're going to have another yard sale for the Longwood Manor house. It will take place tomorrow, Friday, and Saturday, the 12th and 13th, at my house. And my house is right off of North Bedford Road. It is the ninth house on the right-hand side. And we would like everyone, if possible, to come on and just take a browse, take a look. You'll never know, you'll just find just what you've been looking for. So, thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Terry. All right, next on the list is John Medidjsic.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name's John Medidjsic. I live at 1186 River Run Drive, Macedonia, Ohio. And the reason why I'm here is because I was able to view the meeting, the council meeting, last month. And I think there's a lot of issues being tossed around, and I'd like to straighten it out from my perspective. One, this issue is not just my issue, and it's not my neighbors that are east of me, it's our whole development. And Mr. Engel, I wish you and Mr. Molnar would have came out and taken a look at it, because this is not sediment. I have personally taken out at least five volleyball courts worth of sand out of my own yard. Also, the pipe that goes into the main pipe, the drain, is in the middle of my yard, okay? And the issue that I have, that I brought up about the planning commission, because in 1995, when the fire in Twinsburg Township happened, which made the land available for Lake Forest Estates, everybody was aware that that water came from that area. Why it wasn't looked at, I have no idea. But this is what I did. I did a little bit of research. I went on a GIS website for Summit County and pulled up these pictures, these aerial photographs. And when the mayor made some comments about there being development that has happened since then, there's no proof on these pictures that anything's been done since 1995. Nothing, okay? Talk about the retention pond. I'll leave these photos for you, too. Here's the latest picture. I'd like you to take this, if you don't mind, take this and take a look at it.
Sure.
Thank you.
This is my Medina Supply. There's a retention pond. There's the water, the way it comes out of there, it drains in here. And also, here's one off of Enterprise Park.
I've been out there before, and I've walked up to Medina's Supply.
But if you look at those current pictures and the ones from 1994, the condition has gotten worse, okay? These are, you guys, anybody can go on the GIS website and check this out. My concern is this. This is not just my problem. Our whole development's got a huge problem. It's impacting our whole development. Our retention ponds now looks like we're building the islands of Dubai in it. They're popping out of the ground like crazy. Now, that's a huge impact to our whole development. I don't understand why there's an issue with getting this resolved. Jim and Mike came out with the mayor, unfortunately, the mayor couldn't walk it because of his feet. So, when we walked back to the end of the property behind Mr. Hyman's house, that's where they said they were going to put the debris in sand traps to stop this stuff from coming into our development. And one, the sand is one problem, but the debris that it brings with it is another. They have pulled out 14-foot pieces of lumber that they've had a chainsaw out of there. I usually do, probably half of the wood that I burn on my fire pits comes from the creek that I pull out of the drain. I don't think that's right. This has to be resolved. I think everybody's got to come to a decision to get this fixed. It's not our problem. And I know Mr. Deemer here said it's a civil issue. It's not a civil issue. It's a city problem. This should have been looked at prior to this development being put in. So, I think you all need to get together and figure out how you're going to fix it. Also, I have an email from Nick Feeny from 2011 that states in here that they are going to, the recommendation was made to install a detention basin to limit and control erosion. Proposed detention basin has been added to the city's stormwater capital improvement plan. This is in 2011. I don't understand why we have to keep dealing with this, and it's getting worse. And Mr. Molnar, you made the comment that it went away. Ask Mr. Ladd how many emails and how many pictures I've sent to him over the last four years. This guy's mailbox is blown up by them.
You say, I said it went away. I'm sorry, I don't remember what.
You made the comment, you want me to report it?
Sure.
Haven't we all resolved this issue? Came up years ago and went away and it's come back. Those are your words.
Right. From my recollection, my knowledge of the situation, I had not heard anything. That's what I was trying to state.
Well, I understand that. But see, if you and Mr. Engel would have came out and actually seen it, like Rita, Darrell, and Sylvia, you wouldn't think the comments did a sediment, and you wouldn't be making the comment that it went away. I hope this isn't indicative of what people see from you people on council when they have issues or concerns. You know, come out and see it. Don't make comments. You shouldn't have made the judgments you made, because you've got to see it before you can talk about it.
I'll be out tomorrow. What time do you want to be there?
Anytime you want to show up.
Tell me, Saturday?
Bring your rubber boots, we'll go through it, we'll walk through.
Saturday, 9:00. Tell me where to meet you.
My house.
I need your address.
1186 River Run. Are you kidding me? You know how many emails I've sent with my address?
Sir?
You know what it is? You're trying to insult me. I've sent you, how many emails have I sent?
I don't have my emails here. If you don't want me to send me your address?
1186 River Run Drive.
John, it's at 5 minutes, okay? We have lots of speakers.
Well, say it slowly, so I can write it down.
1186 River Run Drive.
All right, next on...
Just a minute, Mayor.
...our phone number.
7213.
Yes, thank you very much.
Are you done?
Dave, I mean, we're all set, ready to go. Yeah, I just couldn't get the address from the man.
All right, next is Kevin Bilkey.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Kevin Bilkey. I live on Lake Forest Estates and am the president of the HOA. And I'm here just to echo basically John's words, is that I represent the development as a whole, more, he represents the individual house. But we do have retention ponds. And from talking to some of my neighbors who've lived there since 2003, have basically said the same thing John said. They started as a pool, and now they look like they are swallowed up by sand. I met with the mayor a couple of weeks back, and I thought I was understanding that somebody was going to come out and take a look, see if there was a problem and how we could fix it. I guess from the minutes from the last meeting, that that wasn't going to be approved by the council. And I'm here tonight to ask you, can we get approval to have someone come out and look, and maybe get a vote right now, so we can figure out why we're having so much sand problem in our retention ponds? Or, I guess the alternative would be, have the city come out and judge our lakes anytime they need judged. Thank you very much for your time. I'd like to hear your votes now. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next is John Casmer.
I'm John Casmer, H49 Chinook Trail, Macedonia. I'm representing the Longwood Manor Historical Society, a group of completely unpaid volunteers restoring the Longwood Manor and Longwood Park. And I have some comments. First of all, although I want to thank Mr. Mayor for recognizing Terry Hudak, one of our members who gave the prayer last council session. That was an outstanding gesture on your part, Mr. Mayor. One of our members, Deb McColsky, is going to have a letter read tonight, I believe, also, Josephine. Did you receive a letter?
I didn't receive any, sir. No, I did not.
You did not?
I did not.
Okay. Then you won't hear the letter tonight.
Sorry about that.
Deb McColsky has devoted much time over many years to the Longwood Manor. She read the letter to us a couple nights ago, and we agree with sentiment she expressed. It'll probably be read the next time. I just want to underline the importance of getting the electricity turned back in the Manor and let you know how this has affected our progress so far. LMHS paid an electrician to do the wiring in June. It was inspected and approved by the building department on June 13th. They did the inspection very quickly. Thank you, Mr. Ladd. After that, Ohio Edison ran the new electric line from the pole outside the house and installed the new meter. I hear Mr. Diglatano had to make personal phone calls to Ohio Edison to get that done on a couple times. He took his time out, and he did it. And that was all done in July, okay? Before the end of July. We had everything installed. You just turn the switch and turn it on. Okay, then we waited, and we waited. On, finally, on August 13th, we sent an email to council asking them to authorize to turn the electricity on. This electricity, right now, this is called a temporary electric service. It's going to run the sub-pump in the house and provide a light in the basement and outlets for power tools to do work. We're talking a small electrical bill to accomplish that. Our plans were to have Jackson Heating start testing and getting the furnace prepared in August. Winter is approaching. We were hoping to get the heat on this winter. This house doesn't do good in this climate, with no heat, no electricity, no air conditioning, no preventative maintenance being done. Water in the basement is not good for a property. Also, the glass gurus, who are going to restore the casement windows in the front of the house as a donation. There's five windows, and that's about $600 worth of work per window. They were going to do it as a donation. I had to tell them that their carpenter can't use a power tool to do the work right now in the house, because there's no electricity on. We may have to postpone our ceremony to install the national register plaque. By the way, I'll interject. Mr. Mayor, it has been passed from Ohio to the National Park Service. We have verification of that. It's kind of like the letters in the mail, the checks in the mail. The National Park Service is sending you the notification. They said, Ohio said, about the middle of September. Okay, I know your concern. I know that you said you could hopefully help us with funding when you get that. It is on the way. The House is on the register. I mean, it was approved by the Ohio Historic. National Register has no, they don't veto it, they just have to get it registered now. So, it's a process. But what this has done is, we've lost momentum this summer. Members and people helping us are losing enthusiasm. Regular donations we were getting aren't coming in. People donate when they see work getting done, when they see improvements. Basically, we haven't accomplished anything since June, and that is unacceptable. We are volunteers restoring the city's property, and we're going to need the city to help us if we're going to get this mission done in the foreseeable future. We feel the starting the electric service should not be so difficult a thing to accomplish. If it is, perhaps councils should take the advice of the gentleman who talked here two weeks ago where I'm standing, Michael Miller. "You're making things way too complicated," I believe he said. I've also heard Councilman Molnar expresses frustrations in work sessions about getting roads repaired for safety. Well, now, I'm feeling the same frustrations, because my group can't get work done. The council, you passed a two-year extension for us to work, but we can't work, okay? We, you did the right thing. You know, that's all I'll say about that. You have helped us consistently this year. You have unanimously voted on issues pertaining to the Longwood Manor. We acknowledge that also. All I can say is, on this motion that's going to come up, it's on your plate now. We urge you to take action before this project deteriorates any further. I think I have another minute. I'd like to address Ms. Tully's comments that I heard in the work session. She made some very good comments. You are right. You're asking, you know, how do you know this group is going to be able to support the Manor, or do the maintenance on the Manor? That's a very good question. We are, we're going to go on our track record that we've established the last two years, Ms. Tully, what we have already accomplished. We put a $40,000 roof on the house. We're paying $500 a year the last three years for insurance. That's coming out of our money. That covers the city also, okay? We are, we support ourselves right now from grants, our memberships, our fundraisers, and donations, okay? I gave everyone our expense revenue statements for 2012 and 2013. If you don't have it, I would, I'll send you another copy. It shows our total revenues, our total expenses in 2013. I don't want to divulge the amounts. We're paying thousands of dollars for an architect right now. That's coming out of our money, okay? We are trying to work with the city. We need your support on this motion. That's all I'll say.
Okay, you owe me three minutes. Next time, you can only talk for two.
Really? Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Moving on to Steve Knotts. Steve?
My name is Steve Knotts. I'm here for the Lake Forest Estate issue that both John and Kevin spoke about. Okay. Just a little nervous. So, first, I want to thank Rita and Sylvia for coming out and looking, taking a look at the amount of sand that does indeed flow through, and it's a massive amount. I mean, you know, you literally, like John said, you almost have to be there and see. It's not a normal stream. I don't know where it's coming from. I don't know, you know, if it is Medina's supply. I don't know if it's naturally occurring. But again, here just to support, to try to get the facts, you know? Is it Medina? Is it naturally occurring? But try to kind of get to the bottom of that. Beyond that, the other issue that I wanted to bring up is, I live kind of next to John, and there's a very large culvert there. And, you know, from what I understand, there's an easement for, I'm not sure, the city, the county, somebody to go in there and do what they need to do, but the maintenance on that culvert is supposedly mine, the owner of record. I've asked around, and that seems almost unheard of. Right before the meeting, I was speaking with Mike Ladd and explaining it to him, and he's like, "Yeah, normally, if there's an easement there, because this, the stream goes through." I mean, it drains hundreds of acres. It goes through multiple jurisdictions. It goes under city streets, all of that. But when it comes to under my driveway, it's somehow my responsibility. So, I would respectfully ask why the sand issue is being looked at, if there could look at that as well, because, I mean, typically, there's many layers of, you know, the city, the county, you know, the EPA, the national, of maintaining these types of structures. And then, one other issue that, there was some comments, I think, about maybe John's home and even mine may not have been built due to the riparian setbacks. And there's actually two new homes that were built right in Lake Forest that have cricks like 15 feet from them. So, I'm not sure, I'm not even sure who made that comment, but if they would drive through there, they're currently building homes very, very close to streams. So, I, you know, just to kind of, anybody can drive by, anybody can look at it. And as far as if anybody wants to come out and look at the sand, which is there, or the culvert free, you know, anybody can come out there and take a peek. And again, thank you. Very nice to meet you, Mayor.
It's nice meeting Steve, too. Steve's new to our community. Welcome, Steve. All right, next is Rose Casmer.
I wanted to respond to what Sue Metzl said. She mentioned the fact that council might be overstepping their bounds and getting involved with the city administration. I want you to reflect on how our national government works. We have the executive branch, and we have a checks and balance with the legislative branch. In this case, if the legislative balance, our council feels a need or have been requested by certain citizens to look into the workings of the administration branch, I find nothing wrong with it. wrong with that. And if I was a city employee, I wouldn't be that concerned about my authority or my responsibilities or whether I'm doing my job. I'd be more concerned about, is whatever I'm doing correct? And if somebody else is looking at what I'm doing, then I would be woman enough to admit that I may be wrong. Okay, specifically, this issue has to do with Dan Havelcheck's barn. I've rode my bicycle, and I've driven down Shepherd Road, and to tell you the truth, I've never noticed his barn. What this complaint is about, I have no idea. Whether having a standalone barn on somebody's property is interfering with my ability to live in Macedonia and feel that my property values are protected, I think it's totally There is a law about, there's not supposed to be any standalone barns. Well, I'm sure when the building commission made this, they were thinking about the future. If somebody came to them today and say, "There's an empty lot. I wanna build a barn there," they would say no. And I respect that right, and I don't have a problem with that. But I don't understand what the complaint is about this barn issue. This could be a personal vindictive. There's also a law in Macedonia now that no homes are supposed to be under 15,000 square feet. Okay, does that mean that my neighbor who gets an empty lot, builds himself a $3,000 square, 3,000 square foot home, has the right to complain that my home is under 15,000? As ridiculous as that sounds, I think it's the same issue here. So, if there is something that can be done to leave Dan Havelcheck alone and let him have his barn on his property, I strongly encourage it.
Well, that was very well said, but let me address it for you, Rose. I went to the BCA. I had council waive the fees. I represented Dan Havelcheck, and I got a reversal of the BCA ruling, and he got a variance, and alls he had to do was let us inspect the barn.
Under Constitution.
All right. Now, I have the floor. So, we did that. And in my mind, it was much ado about nothing, so that's why I went through all that trouble. And it looks like I went through all that trouble for naught. All right? The BCA agreed. They said, "Look, have the barn there. No problem, but we wanna inspect it just to make sure there isn't something there inside that barn that could damage the houses next to the barn." And that was because we had complaints from neighbors that they felt there was things in there. Otherwise, the city wouldn't have gone after Dan on a personal basis. It was a result of a complaint. It went too far. I tried to end it, and I guess I failed. So, there was a history of trying to help Dan. All right, let's move on to Ace Marcos.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councils. My name is Ace Marcos. I also live on Lake Forest Estate, also on River Run Drive, and this might be, hear the same story again, but I also wanna talk about the sand issue. We have spent, John and I, and just wanna echo what Kevin says and Steve, same thing, it's all about the sand. We really would like to have the sand issue resolved once and for all. We spent, I spent days and hours shoveling the sand out of that creek by my office, by my house. We used to joke, John and I, about going out and workout, because it was a really good workout at the beginning, but it has, it only takes one rain, and the sand comes back. So, it's becoming a hassle, and I would greatly appreciate if we take this matter very seriously and get it resolved. Thank you.
All right. The thing that was going to happen, just so everybody's clear on this, is we were going to have someone come out and try and determine the cause of the sand coming there. And that needed authorization from council. So, perhaps tonight, one of the council members will make a motion for us to proceed with that because we're ready to go. Our engineers have been in touch with them. Mike, do you remember cost?
The initial cost to bring them out is $1,200, and then to do the detailed tests is $2,500 apiece, and I would anticipate two tests.
All right, so the initial cost, he could at least give us an opinion.
The $1,200, yes.
For $1,200, to get the ball rolling.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
What are we hoping to learn by this test? I mean, we really haven't discussed it, so what do we wanna learn?
It would be a geotechnical firm that would actually come out, analyze the sand without giving you detailed tests to verify. He could tell you if it's sand that would be coming from a supply or if it would be natural sand.
So, would tell us, are you saying that it will tell us that it's coming from Medina supply?
Either that or natural sand. It would give us his opinion on it.
So, are we gonna go up and take some sand out of Medina supply to compare them?
I think, Nick, you talked to him before. Did he give you details of?
Well, engineer, this is the law department, too. So, the issue came up, and I cannot, you know, I couldn't ask somebody to go and test something on somebody else's property outside of our boundary. So, that was the dilemma that I had in discussion with Tom Hansel in the law department.
That's very true. John?
I understand what you're saying about going on Medina supply's property, but my neighbor and I walked on the railroad tracks on Sunday, and there's a drainage pipe that's directly out of that retention basin they have. It goes underneath the tracks, and then it goes down into the creek bed, and we actually took sand from that area. We didn't walk on their property. We were on the south side of the tracks. But also, I wanna make a comment that whether the sand's coming from Medina supply or Twinsburg or whatever, the only benefit to having that sand tested, because if it is coming from Medina supply, that'll help the city offset some of the costs to put in some kind of, like what Jim DiGutano was explaining, they, him and Mike came up, they were gonna put this sand debris trap in Twinsburg Township on the backside of our development to stop it from coming in. So, testing the sand actually is gonna help the city, because if it is Medina supply, they're gonna get the cost. The city can recoup their money that way, but at least it'll stop the sand from coming into our development, going into our retention ponds, because God knows how much retention pond it's gonna cost to dredge, which is gonna impact every single resident in our development.
I don't wanna put Nick on the hot seat, but I think it's your opinion that it's coming from a different source, but the test would verify where it's coming from. And the source is the corporate park that sit behind our development that also drains into our lakes. But the test would just help us figure out where it's coming from and what we need to do to fix it. And we'd like the city to pay for it since they authorized the development in the first place. So, that's what we're asking for, is the initial test, and then if that shows that there's something wrong, then the initial, the second and third test, that the homeowners cannot undertake. That's, I guess that's what we're here asking for.
Mr. Deemer, did you contact the city of Twinsburg Township on this matter?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
One of the things that keeps coming up is retention basins. If I tried hard enough, I could probably tell you fellows where we need 10 of them, place by place by place. The only way those are ever gonna be built and maintained is with funding. I proposed legislation this year to put a quarter of a percent city income tax on the ballot that would be dedicated to streets and stormwater. That would guarantee we have a funding source. There are so many problems with stormwater throughout the city that I have empathy for what you're telling me and sympathy, because I formed a stormwater committee years ago in 2006 to try and address all the problems we have. We have a plan, but you can't implement the plan if you don't have money put aside for it.
It's my understanding that that was a renewal, but never got to the voters. So, maybe the council can explain why a renewal never got to, the people never got to vote on it.
It wasn't a renewal. It was a proposed quarter percent income tax with 100% reciprocity, meaning if you lived and worked in town, you paid nothing. It was more or less, anyone who worked in Macedonia would pay that quarter percent amount, $50,000, I think it was $100 bucks. Jan Tully and I voted to place that on the ballot for you, the people, to vote on. Others didn't agree with us.
Okay, we need to relook at that, then.
Well, let's look at this, because I wanna say something about it.
There's no pot of gold, believe me.
I wanna say something about this, because, number one, this issue with how to approach this large ditch, which actually should be an easement if it's not, on the property that goes into Lake Forest and your retention ponds, this issue has been discussed for probably four years now. Nothing has happened about this. We have authorized stormwater repairs this year, and let me tell you something. We're continuing to collect taxes at the rate that we collected them last year without an increase in taxes. We have money that we're setting aside for roads. We will be setting aside more for next year, and we will have money to do the kind of work that we're talking about here. That's really not an issue, and no one presented this as something we needed to authorize last time. But let me put it this way. We do not need additional tax money to cover the revenue shortfall that we had this, we thought we were gonna have this year. That projection proved to be wrong. And so, we have the tax money. We need to allocate it properly. We certainly don't want to prevent you all from finding out where that sand is from. The sand issue, though, is not just that you folks are having to work out to dig out the sand. Our service department has to go over there and clean out catch basins and other items along that area on a regular basis. That means that it's costing us money to do that. So, we need to think in longer terms about what is the source of the problem and how do we create barriers so that it's not constantly refilling that ditch?
And that's what we're asking.
Well, I understand.
We're asking.
I know that's what you're, I'm just telling you, it's not a money issue. It is, it has not been a money issue. It has been a discussion point for four years, and there has been never a decision about what to do. We had, we had the extra quarter percent last year, let me tell you, before it expired, that's correct, it did expire, before this council took office. And I'm just telling you, when we had the extra quarter percent, we are collecting primarily the same amount of money. Why is that? Because the economy is recovering. The reason we put that quarter percent on was that we had a disaster in '08 and '09, and we needed to have, we lost about $2 million in 2009, excuse me, in 2009 and 2010, we were down a total of about $2.3 million from our normal collections. So, that tax, which was, took place in '11, '12, and '13, was to bring us back up to a level that we would normally be at. What I'm telling you is, we're already there. We're even above our normal collection points, because it's as if that tax was still in place, what we're collecting. Yes, yes, sir.
And the point, and obviously, there are differences of opinion. You get that. But the test is, for example, if that does happen to be a private company, if it's a city, that could be a revenue source for the cleanup.
It is true. If someone is, in fact, causing that problem, then there's an EPA effort, and there's all kinds of things that can be done, and we know that. And the council is not attempting to prevent that or prevent any action at all. You've asked the city, they did go out to, and they suggested a plan of action, is my understanding. Since you, they did suggest one, we have never been against the plan of action that was suggested, and so, we are happy to support that. But as far as I'm aware, we weren't asked to fund the test. If we are, I don't have a problem doing that. I'm just telling you that we, there's no money issue preventing us from dealing with this problem. That's a fact. That's reality.
No, I appreciate that, but the other point is, the point out is the wear and tear from the delay and from the sand on the culverts.
Yes.
Clearly, your point is well-taken. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the culvert I have is the sand, the stones, the, you know, tree limbs, everything comes along.
Exactly.
There's a lot of delay of any action dealing with this.
Well, the real issue is this. We had, there should be a prevention plan to prevent that amount of sand and that debris from coming into that culvert, which is meant to take stormwater, not to take, you know, boatloads of sand and debris down through Lake Forest Estates. Your point was that this should've been planned for back when that Lake Forest was built, and I gather your retention ponds are having problems, too, from what your statement is. And that, you know, we can, we can talk about this all day, but really, there has to be a longer-term plan to simply prevent that stuff from coming, from where it's coming from, wherever that is. It could be the sandstone formations, as has been suggested by Mr. Feeney, or it could be that it's from some combination of sources. We can do a test to find that out. I favor it, but we weren't asked to fund it. I thought they had funding to go ahead to do the test. If they don't, then we maybe have to do something.
I gotta point something out here, too. When you guys went out there, I mean, did we have any idea that the test was needed, and why wasn't that presented? I mean, if we knew that that was something that could've been done, why hadn't we done that? And secondly, hold on. When we talk about the quarter percent, and I know I'm gonna be on your guys' problem, but I try to look at all the problems that we have in town. When she spoke to the stormwater problems that we're addressing, we addressed problems that have failed. A crossover failed. In other words, there's a hole in the ground. It's about to sink. That's not preventing anything. The tax that was proposed would've been to prevent these problems from occurring. Yours, I think, maybe was one of them. I'm not real sure what was on there. I know when the Stormwater Committee was formed, it was looking at the city as a collective, all the problems that we had altogether, to resolve all of them. We have not addressed those. We're only waiting for things to fail. That's why you guys sit here today. That's why I'm saying, when we proposed that quarter percent, we could've started to address these problems that we've never addressed before. I don't wanna let it linger anymore, and I apologize for not coming out to look at it. I will. I don't know, I'm sorry if you misunderstood what I was saying, but I lost track over time where we ended up with your problem, so I apologize for that.
I'd love to give this to you guys. This, you might not even have this email. It's from 2011, where Nick Feeney actually said that they were gonna propose that on the storm, for to get this taken care of in 2011. So, you guys can, I don't know if you still have this. So, it's been on the radar. It's been on the radar for a long time.
Yes, and you're right. It has. It has, John.
Can I wrap this up?
Sure.
I just, I apologize for getting upset. You gotta realize, I have put so much money and time and effort into my yard and bond with Ace. Seriously, I really wanna get this resolved, because I honestly don't wanna send any people any more emails. I like working with these guys, and I've known Jan forever, and it's just, I just really wanna see this resolved and get on the front. Okay? I appreciate the time.
Let me wrap this up, though. As a member of the Stormwater Committee, and I'm gonna dispute, we didn't have the money. We put together plans everywhere. Let's talk, you know, John, boy, do I have empathy for the dollars you put in, because the guy in the corner of my street put in probably three times as much because of the pipe that was put in Guadalupe that just runs rampant down the street down Berkshire. Or, you know, Nick knows, we've sat at the table talking about Indian Creek. We've talked about Eileen. We've talked about Shepherd Hills. We've talked about Navajo. We've talked about, we actually got the retention base locally up at the school. But we didn't, there, I hate to say it, as a member of the committee, we identified and we created plans, but there wasn't the funding. And so, and it took every area of this city. We didn't concentrate on the north. We didn't concentrate on the south. We actually went through every area of this city to identify, where did we have? We had the planners, we had residents who live in those areas who had the issues, and we had, luckily, we did have Northeast Ohio Water show up, and that's when they first started talking about their fee.
first start, started talking about their fee, and that their fee would help do projects in the district, which basically was going to be in Cleveland. And that didn't go over very well, so talked to the mayor, and we talked to the law department, and the consortium of cities got together to say, we don't mind paying an extra fee, but that money should come back here to address our problems. You know, yes, water flows through the various watersheds. So I'd like to wrap this up so we can get into the city business of the fact that it is recognized. It does need money to do it right, so that we do it once and that we don't have to revisit it again. And if the first step is the authorization of going ahead and getting an inspection to identify where that sand is coming from, then council and work session has already agreed to do that, to make a motion. But we need to get into the business of the city so we can make that motion. But thank you all for coming tonight and expressing it. I wish it was an anomaly, but it's not in this community with water.
Long discussion. I think that was longer than five minutes, I'm not sure. All right, Joel, Joel Dickmeyer? Hi, come on down.
Thank you for hearing me. I've got a few different things that has not been brought up. I live over here in Park Avenue, okay? I live in the ranch house that my mother-in-law used to own, she died, passed away, so we inherited the house. We're putting money into the house remodeling and everything else. I've talked to, and he went out there to look at the problem with the draining, the drains. They are much lower than the, the city streets. I mean, we have no curbs, we have nothing over there, which is not a big deal. But all I'm asking for is, one of the things is the drain to be raised up, because, so I can raise my driveway up to take care of some of the water that, that flows and lays there, because in the wintertime, that becomes an ice rink. And it also becomes an ice rink on Park Avenue. And the way these people drive, coming from Valley View to 82, there should be no reason why anybody should be going 50 miles an hour on that, on that short of a street. But there is, and for that matter of fact, that thing turns into an ice rink right in front of my house. I would just like it to be raised up. And I believe he sent somebody out there to look at it, and he told my daughter that there was nothing they could do. I went back to him, and he said there was somebody going to be, come over to talk to me about it last Wednesday morning, and nobody showed up. I would just like it to be resolved because of the fact that sooner or later, somebody's going to get killed on that street. And that's a very serious issue.
You're, it, it's very interesting, because we have legislation before us tonight to try and do something about the flooding issues there on Park. The city owns the corner lot, and we're talking about putting a rain guard in there and doing the types of things that they tell you to do that helps in excess of water. As far as that lot might be draining into your lot or into that area causing more water, it would sure help if we had that rain guard in there.
Well, see, the problem is, is I'm getting it from both sides from the city. Tim Black owns the house next to us, which his house is higher than mine. The lot that sits next to me, which is owned by the city also, also drains into the end of our driveway, because that's where the drain is, everything's sloped that way. Now, my problem is, is the drain sits here, where the, the tree is here, and the drain sits here. The tree is the city lot. The drain is there, so I would say it's mostly, it is, is a problem for, I would hope the city would help me out with it.
Well, let me put it to you this way, do you use email?
Not very often, but yeah, I use it.
Not very often. Because the best thing to do would be to write down your thoughts, send them to me, and I'll look into it with my building department for you.
Okay, and the other issue is the tree line behind, behind our house, and Tim can also talk about it, I guess he's not here. We're, you know, it's, it's got these berry bushes, it got these trees that just don't look very presentable. Your lawn on your side, which is, them bushes and all that, is, is still on the city lot. I would hope that it's all going to be taken care of too, along with the, the end, end lot by 82. Am I correct?
Well, let's put it this way, this is a, when we get a chance job. So I can't say you'll see an improvement in a short period of time. This is not a high priority job, you know, it's high priority you, but boy, we got some real problems that our service department deals with on a daily basis, so.
Being a construction worker, I understand that.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm just mentioning it because of the fact that, you know, something has to be done with it, you know, eventually, and hopefully sooner or later, but I understand this is one of them things, because this has been going on since 2011 or whatever, I was told this was going to be taken care of and everything else. But, you know, the other problem is, my wife is scared of snakes, and now we've got snakes in, in our yard.
Holy cow.
Because of the fact that across the street, the, the property that's owned by a commercial site never gets mowed.
Yeah, it's bad.
The site down at the end on the city lot gets mowed, most of it. But, you know, there's, you've still got long weeds where, where they dug up that, that tank, tank that was in, in the ground, where they dug up, and, and the dirt never got leveled, so that never gets mowed. Now, I understand, I don't have a problem with snakes because of the fact that I have no mics.
Yeah, well, there's good news and bad.
But you know as well as I do that you have to listen to the other half.
You better believe it.
And you lose out.
You better believe it.
So, and Tim's going to lose out on that one, too, because he don't mind the snakes either, because we have no mics. But if you know, you know of anything about a cooked duck, I don't want to hear it, because you know how them women are.
Yep.
So, that's all I got to say.
All right, well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. We were unaware.
Rather have mice.
Yeah, all right, and last, but not least is Steve. Steve, is it Noam?
No.
Yes.
My name is Steve Noam. I'm currently on the board of the Preservation Alliance of Greater Akron, which is an organization whose mission is to actively encourage and promote the preservation, maintenance, restoration, adaptive reuse of building sites and neighborhoods of agricultural, architectural or historical significance in Summit County. And I recently became a member of the Longwood Manor Historical Society. In 2006, my group entered into an agreement with the city of Akron to use and renovate a one-room 1870 schoolhouse owned by the city of Akron, to use as our headquarters and make available for use of the, by the community. With financial gifts and grants from foundations, we've essentially completed the work this year. I used to work for the Akron Health Department, I retired, I spent over 27 years doing housing inspections. So I did thousands of inspections of dilapidated condemned houses, and I pursued demolition of properties when it was deemed appropriate. And I know that they can, the absence of utilities certainly expedited the demolition, the deterioration of vacant homes and made demolition more likely. And the absence electricity and heat in Longwood Manor, it's certainly detrimental to the, the manor. So I encourage city council to do what it takes to get the electricity on so they can get the heat running there and preserve the property. That's all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to pending and/or new legislative items, starting with ordinance number 69-2014.
I'd like to offer ordinance 69-2014 for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the review of the charter by the Charter Review Commission, fixing its duties and establishing a procedure for the review.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 69-2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow? Mr. Engel? Ms. Hanneken? Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on to resolution number 70-2014.
I'd like to offer resolution number 70-2014 for its third reading by title only, please.
A resolution confirming the appointment, appointments to the Charter Review Commission.
Before we pass, I'd like to make an amendment to section two, where the state's council hereby elect blank. I'd like to fill in the blank with Mr. Dave Engel as its council representative to the Charter Review Commission for 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law resolution number 70-2014, please.
Need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number 76-2014.
I'd like to offer ordinance 76-2014 for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance accepting the Ohio EPA, section 319H nonprofit source, nonprofit source implementation grant for the lake-airy watershed to be used for the Macedonia Stormwater Innovation Park and authorizing the mayor to enter, enter into an agreement therefore.
And what's your pleasure?
Move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 76-2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 82-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 82-2014 for a third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending, the codified, amending codified ordinance, section 1171-15B, to allow a storage barn as a non-residential use in a residential district.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend ordinance 82-2014, paragraph five, and there's been some confusion because we've been working with the law department. I want, I want to read the language that, that, that I, we want. So it'd be paragraph, paragraph five, storage barns, excuse me, storage facilities, barns, sheds, or similar such structures as standalone structures when the chief main building use has been demolished or otherwise removed from the parcel leaving a non-conformery, non-conformery, non-conforming, I apologize, accessory structure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we post, we pass and post ordinance 82-2014 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Before I vote, Ms. Metzger, and I appreciate all the work that you've done on BZA, and it's, this is certainly not addressed to BZA, and I understand that you've put a lot of effort in this. This ordinance was originally proposed by me over a year ago, and it's been lingering around in a lot of places in planning, and the planner looked at it, the law department looked at it, and it came, it got through all that process about the same time as the last issue. So this is not to address anything with the barn. It, it's to do away with, we don't have these problems in the future, that we have to go round and round and round. And so, it, it's not addressed to BZA or its actions. I respect BZA, and I respect all the work that you people put into these committees. The city couldn't function without those. But, but I felt that this, that this was proposed over a year ago, and it just by happenstance found its way through the city administration at the same time. So with that explanation, I vote yes.
Did I, you already did. Okay, so you threw me, because it got a little, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Darrow, Mr. Engel, Ms. Hanneken?
Yes, let me just make this comment, I certainly do respect the BZA, so it's not a question about the BZA itself. It is a question simply for me of what is reasonable policy with regard to this situation, not just here, but in other situations we discuss in work session. And as long as we're simply talking about not building a new building that is standalone, but a, a conforming structure that was built with a home that has now been demolished, for whatever the reason, then I believe that the great, the right policy would be not to require that we remove the building as it exists in our code today. So that's why I'm voting yes.
It just seems that the timing is just, it's just right now, and I can't help but say that you're just, you know, you said it was around for a year or better, but.
If you want.
I have no problem with, the thing is, I have no problem with letting this barn exist, but just have the inspection and remove the condition, and if we're done, the whole thing.
All right, we're moving forward, but you bring up a good point, because I have a question. Is that barn included, or will it be absolved by this legislation?
I am assuming that it's in, in the legislation, we're setting a policy for the city.
You need to keep voting.
I.
Call the roll.
I, I haven't finished her.
Yep, we still have two more to go.
I'm saying, go ahead, call the roll.
Ms. Hanneken, were you done?
I said, yes.
Yes, but were you done talking?
I was.
Okay.
That's why I said yes.
All right. Mr. Mulner?
This problem has lingered for quite some time, and I'm kind of, kind of echoed Mr. Barker when he sat up here and talking about your rights and your home, and I feel that when you pay for a piece of property, you should be able to do with it what you please within reason. I think this is well within reason. I think where we fell short is, in this legislation, we took out, and I think this will address some of the question, at the last section, it said approval of council will be necessary for such structures to be permissible. So this council's not going to determine whether or not that structure's permissible. The BZA and the, and the planning commission are, planning commission?
Just to affect the planning.
Will still have their, their say in it, and that's what I want. I'm also going to propose, probably in the next meeting.
That was removed. Yeah, it was removed. That was removed. The planning commission is removed.
No, the.
You removed everything to end it, accessory structure.
Yeah, planning was taken out.
Planning was taken out.
No, I thought we ended it with accessory structure.
This is not, this is policy.
Planning was taken out.
Right.
But the BZA was not.
There'll be no need for a BZA, because it'll be legal then to have.
BZA is only when there's a variance requested. This says you don't need a variance because it's, 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 it's legal.
Right, because it had already received a variance.
But what I'm getting at, what I was going to state, was that I think that we should have some type of inspection at that point, because I think that is a safety factor that has to be weighed upon. So for the time being, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I will be coming back with something to state that it needs to be inspected.
Okay. It, can it, sorry.
Ms. Tully?
Sorry, Jen.
I, I'm, I respect that people have the ability to do what they want on their property. I also find it extremely coincidental that this started at the time that the situation was one particular person's property. So to say that, no, this was ongoing, I've never had another complaint in the 15 years that I was on council. I know someone brought up the fact that Guadalupe was able to do it. I don't know if they filed the BZA or not, to be honest with you, so that's city's fault if we did not follow through. My concern is the fact that we're changing the law for one incident, and our laws are supposed to be fair and equitable for every resident in this community. I always remember the chief saying to me, fair, equitable, and enforceable. I don't believe that we should ever change any law for one particular person, that we need to look at the entire community. I also have a fear that what we've done is we've taken away the checks and balances of the BZA, which is created by law for specifically these types of situations. So if we now say it's okay to do this, what's to say that in another year, we get another piece of legislation? And how do we say no to that person when they have a particular issue that they want on their property? It's a difficult decision when you're taking the law and changing it. You need to assure that it takes care of every resident in this community. And I agree with Mr. Molner, there's no inspection on here. I brought up the issue within the work session. Now, if my house burns down and my shed's falling down, but you can't tell that because it's, only, you can only see it from the street. You don't have an inspection, you have no idea what I have in my backyard. Besides that, and the gentleman, I have snakes in my backyard. My vote for this is based on the law. The vote is no.
Moving on to.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four dash Two Thousand Fourteen.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution Number Eighty-four Two Thousand Fourteen.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Moving on is Ordinance Number Ninety Dash Two Thousand Fourteen.
I'd like to offer Ordinance Ninety Two Thousand Fourteen for its second reading by title only.
Excuse me. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to engage the state auditor to create a tailored performance audit of the City of Macedonia Departments and Services.
And what's your, oh, that was second, I'm sorry. Ordinance Number Ninety-One Dash Two Thousand Fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Ninety-One Two Thousand Fourteen for its first, or excuse me, second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An emergency ordinance to appropriate for street purposes certain fee simple interests and/or easements in and to the premises more fully described below and the plans and specifications for the project along State Route Eighty-two to facilitate its widening and resurfacing, including drainage improvements and traffic control signals further identified as PID number eight-one-six-five-six with the county state section number of some State Route Eighty-two four-point-six-five.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Deemer, before we, we vote on this, there were some questions in council, and I know that this is dealing with appropriation of land, and we need to pass it tonight. Can you kind of give us a, a brief summary so everybody on councils understands, and also so the people in the audience understand that the title really is a lot of mumbo jumbo? No offense if you wrote the title.
Well, we, uh, we had, this is not our creation, no. It's, it's a kind of a form ordinance that's being passed around the county. We have had different kinds of community reinvestment programs and incentive programs throughout the county and in this city since the beginning.
Sir, they're talking about the Phase Three widening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were ninety-two still.
Ninety-one.
Oh. Yes, this one we need to be passed.
So you did write the mumbo jumbo for this one?
The statutory language.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
But it is out of the statutes. The, um, the number of properties has been changing, it's fluid, because the, the State of Ohio has hired a negotiator to go out there and, and do the negotiations on the property acquisitions. Some have been accomplished, and others have not been accomplished. And the point is that this will change even again as to the numbers. However, in order to meet the time periods for the grants of money, we need to get those who we are sure are not going to be resolved started in the court process, and therefore, we would ask that it be adopted and get going for the purpose of getting the appropriation proceedings started. We'll probably have another ordinance amending this yet again, and certainly if we resolve those issues, and hopefully we do with everyone, then the, all of them will be dropped, and then there'll be a final ordinance for that purpose.
So this is the eminent domain, the beginning of eminent domain.
Correct.
For eighty-two, so that it can be rewiden, widened at two-seventy-one.
Exactly. And these are the, those that we have entered into agreements with or that we have concerns about yet.
All right.
Could I ask one question today?
Sure, please.
I am interested in, I understand what you're saying, that this is just the beginning of a process, and they are negotiating. Is there any top-level dollar amount that's involved here, or do we just?
ODOT is determining those amounts, and they're negotiating those amounts, and they've given their appraisers, uh, full authority to come up with an appraised value.
So we're, we're basically committing to whatever ODOT says is going to be the value, is that correct?
Correct, because they're paying for it.
I thought we were, we had to pay for the right-of-way in these sections, we the city.
Well, I, I believe this is the east end of eighty-two, Nick? East end by.
Yeah, you're correct.
Phase three.
It's Phase Three.
So that's ODOT.
Okay.
We're, we're two-seventy-one.
Yeah, this is not the ramp.
I understand that, I'm, I don't think it's the ramp, but what I'm saying is, I thought that these right-of-way issues were covered by our funding.
The, the right-of-way funding split for this project is eighty-twenty.
Okay, so we have twenty percent of whatever they come up with, that's what I thought. And we don't have a top-line number, so we're just committing twenty percent of whatever they agree to, basically, all right.
I understand.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Engel, oh.
Yes, I'll vote yes.
Well, I do need a second. What I started to say, sir, was that you had offered it for adoption. Now you are seconding.
Sure.
Now I will do a roll call.
Excellent idea.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
I will still vote yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, Ordinance Number Ninety-Two Dash Two Thousand Fourteen.
I'd like to offer Ordinance Ninety-Two Two Thousand Fourteen for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a revised agreement with some county and other participating municipalities with regards to the Intergovernmental Memorandum of, um, 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 Memorandum of Understanding for Job Creation and Retention and Tax Revenue Sharing with the term beginning October one, twenty fourteen, through twenty, uh, June thirtieth, twenty fifteen.
All right, um, that one is getting only a first reading because we're getting together figures, folks, so. I'm sure it'll come through.
Second.
Second reading.
Still not up to the.
Yeah, we're getting figures.
You're accurate.
All right, now, uh, Ordinance Number Ninety-Four.
It's Ninety-three, right?
Ninety-three dash Two Thousand Fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number Ninety-Three, uh, for its first reading by title only, please.
An order, provide, an ordinance providing for a senior snow removal program for the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen winter season.
All right, so this will be moving ahead when we get some pricing. Ordinance Number Ninety-Four Two Thousand Fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Ninety-Four Two Thousand and Fourteenth for its, for, for second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Twenty-fourteen Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number Twenty-Six Twenty Fourteen.
And what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer that we, I'd like to pass and post Ordinance Number Ninety-Four Two Thousand and Fourteen, uh, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
This, let me make one small comment here. The largest, the largest amount here is twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's for vehicle repairs for the fire department. There's been an emergent issue which the chief has asked us to fund, and we have done that. And we are recognizing the collection of sixty-four hundred dollars for the senior center. They've actually collected the money through lunches, and we're just posting it into our books.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion that we pay for manor house utilities for the, uh, to support our manor house team, which is in the process, as they said earlier, of doing the job of, of the, basically taking the lead in helping restore our building, which will be on the National Register of Historic Homes, probably within the next couple of weeks. So would like to have that done, is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to amend that to state that the cost will be capped at a hundred dollars a month, please, as discussed in our work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
No? Roll call.
Wait a minute.
On the amendment.
This is on the amendment. On the amendment to cap it, I have a, Ms. Tully made the motion, Mr. Molner seconded. This is to cap it at a hundred dollars. Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanneken?
No.
Mr. Molner?
I thought we agreed that we would cap it at that, and if it went above or beyond that, we would talk about it, but apparently I was wrong.
You were wrong.
Um, Ms. Tully?
You're exactly right, we walked out of there with an agreement that that's what we would have, those people that were in there would have heard it. Obviously, what's said in the work session is not kept out on the floor. My vote is yes, because that was our agreement.
I'm voting no on the amendment, simply because in two thousand and two, council's motion was that we would continue to pay utility bills, and utility bills haven't been paid since then. We have a private organization who's raised enough money to put forty thousand dollars on the roof of the manor house. Manor house is historically significant, and we on council in the city have to step up and start supporting it. And the supporting it to pay for a sump pump and a light bulb in the basement and some electricity when they need to work on it is minimal support and minimal cost. Council in two thousand and two said we should be paying utility bills, nobody's been paying them. We need to do what's right. It's a building that we own, it's a building that has historical significance, and I'm sure that the, the cost of electricity is not going to go over a hundred dollars, but it's the, it's the projection that we need to show support to get this manor house going, so that the, the fact that they, there's somebody willing to donate three thousand dollars' worth of work for windows that they can't do because we don't have electricity, I didn't realize that, John, and I'm appalled that that's happened. So that's why I'm, I, I'm, I mean, I don't want to support the limitation.
I don't disagree that we are going to pay the bill. I do agree, especially knowing that our finance chair asks us to inspect every dollar that is spent within this community, and we've held our department head's feet to the fire for every dollar they spend. I think we should also do that for this committee. In the past, we have had other committees that paid their way also, and they expended even far more dollars than some of the previous committees that were there. I applaud their efforts, I'm not saying we're not going to turn on the electric, I'm saying we need to have a reasonable amount of money, and that's why I voted yes.
All right, what's your pleasure?
Now we have, we, we go back to Ms. Hanneken's, um, original motion, and who was the second on that one?
I did.
Okay, we're ready. Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
I want to be real clear about this, because I don't want it to be painted into a corner, but I've always supported you guys, I've always, I was actually the one, the last time we extended it, I extended an additional six months, which you may have forgotten, but always have had that support. The only thing I was saying is when we talked in that room over there, and we talked about capping, and if you needed more, you come back to us, we'll give it to you. We weren't going to say you weren't going to get it, we're not going to turn the power off on you, but something changed when we walked out here, I don't know what it was. I will always support it, I, I've been a fan of it ever since, and my vote's yes.
Ms. Tully?
My vote is no, based on the fact that with the agreement we had was not withheld, which does not surprise me.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm not certain, but I'm going to offer a motion here to make sure that the test that, that has been requested by the, the twelve-hundred-dollar test is in fact done for the Lake Forest Estate ditch problem.
I need to get some more than that.
We have enough stormwater money that I would use, because it's a stormwater issue, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, it is, yes.
And, uh,
So you feel like you could?
I, I have, I can, I can afford to pay for the, the initial.
Right, I understand.
And my, if, if it goes above that, like into that five thousand mark, I would probably have to ask.
Okay, we understand.
So.
So we don't need to do anything, is what you're saying?
I, I have the funding to, if you want to do the initial, yes.
Joe, do we need to do anything?
I think council should give direction on it, that way he'll know that regardless of any administration decision, that council's okay with going ahead and spending that money out of his department.
Okay, and the mayor's okay with it?
Absolutely.
But what happens with town, the township over there, Twinsburg Township, do you have to get permission to go and get sand over there, or what do you got to do?
Let me explain a little bit to you, Rita, what we're going to do is have a man that has a lot of expertise come out and survey the situation, um, he might take some samples of rock without having to go on the other property and say, well, this is erosion, well, then we're done, all right? If he finds that he has to go on the other property, we have further steps.
Okay, all right.
Do you need a second?
Then we'll, then we'll initiate getting Reese's cooperation from.
Okay.
I just wanted from some clarity.
Since it was brought up.
Ms. Hanneken made a motion for the twelve-hundred dollars, is it safe to say just the twelve-hundred dollars, primary or preliminary geotech? Is the word geotech appropriate? Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Wait, do we need to put the exact?
We have them.
Fourteen hundred.
Okay, fourteen hundred dollars, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we're taking some steps. Any other motions or legislative actions this evening? Correspondents from the clerk?
I have none, sir.
Aye, aye. I'm sorry for the delay, but I just lost my mayor's report.
Yeah, excellent.
Let's celebrate, right?
We love aye.
Yeah, right.
All right, um, we're going to go into committee reports.
Sylvia, you want to go first?
Why don't you go?
Mr. Mayor, okay, I've lost my spot.
Excellent.
Oh, lordy mercy, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Usually, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Macedonia Planning will be meeting on September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen at five, five-thirty P.M. We will be discussing a proposal to replace existing under-canopy blade signs from Macedonia Commons, a proposed cell phone tower alterations for Sprint Crown Castle at one, uh, one-two-four-one-seven West Highland Road, a proposal zombie stunt jump for Fun and Stuff at six-six East Highland Road, a propos, uh, proposed construction of patio and seating area for Lake Forest Homeowners Association at Block A, corner of River Run and Pond Brook, and Block B, Whispering Woods, a proposed zoning code change related to accessory structures, a discussion regarding the biannual tree board review, a proposal for minor revisions to master plan for the Nordonia Hills City Schools at eight-zero-zero-six Bedford Road. And, um, I believe that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, any other committee reports? Hearing none, I'll very quickly get into my mayor's report. In my ten years mayor, for the past eleven years, I've always addressed at least one dilapidated city street and paid for it cash every year. Each one of those streets also came in under budget. This is the first year I am unable to keep that street going in spite of having almost a four-point-five-million-dollar carryover when you count our emergency funds in with the money. I apologize for your city's failure to respond to your very evident needs. I apologize for your city's failure to respond to your very evident needs. Some of our elected leaders feel it's more important to be prudent than use your tax dollars to improve our streets. It has also been stated that Macedonia should have no problems fixing streets in the future. I'm asking your help to hold us to that promise. City improvement outweighs political agendas any day. End of report. Next is department reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this will be pretty short. I just want to make sure now that I can turn on the electric.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I will do that ASAP. Okay. Now, I just have a couple of things. Letters are going to go out to the, next week, to the Black Hawk and Iroquois residents, and it's in regards to the stormwater project that we'll be doing probably in the beginning of October. And this is basically to inform them of what to expect when I go on that property, because it's, I'm going to go back to ditches. I've talked to Nick about that, and that there's, it's too, the pipes are too small, and they never should have been there in the first place. And I'm going back to open ditches, but I'm going to explain this to, to the residents, and in fact, I'm going to offer, in that letter will state, on October second, which is a Thursday, I'm going to ask them to come here at the council chambers, and if they have any questions, I'll describe to them or talk to them and tell them what I'm going to do, so that they understand, so they don't go into shock when they see us digging up their pipes and their existing catch bases. Their, that design was absolutely useless. So, that's what we're going to do, and that's on October second, Thursday, at six o'clock here. And then also, I'm going to have another meeting on Tuesday, October seventh. I'll announce these all again at the end of our last council meeting in September. But it's for all the residents, for our new rubbish contract, so everybody can understand what's going to be going on, because it's automated, and a lot of people are kind of not sure what's going to go on. So, October seventh, which is another, is a Tuesday at six o'clock, again, in council chambers, all the residents come here. The big shots from Republic will be here, and they'll answer any questions that you have, anything. So, it'll be a good day, a good night to come here, and we can get all, this all hashed out with others, you know, keep going back and forth. So, that's it, man. I just want to let you know about these couple of meetings that I'm going to hold, and hopefully you'll be able to help the residents.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mike?
I have a question for Jimmy.
Yes.
Jimmy, there was something brought up tonight, and I just wanted to verify it with you. I wasn't too sure, some of the money we appropriated for the roads and stuff that we're working on, that it was my understanding that one of the roads, the hole in the ground, the hole in the road, is actually a water main break. Is that correct?
You know, over by Miglerini Way?
Yes.
Yes, that is a, in fact, it seems that it's getting even worse, because we found that there was water running in another storm drain, sewer that's running through...
I, I just want to make sure that I, because I understood that it was a water main break in there.
It's Cleveland Water.
And that it wasn't a, you know, so we went in there and we appropriated money to fix this, and it's, the hole in the road is actually a water main break, and I just wanted to make sure that was verified.
Well, it, it is, part of that is, is because of the water.
Okay.
And they're finding more issues. And in fact, we have a meeting in the morning tomorrow with Cleveland Water, with Joe Miglerini and that, because we're finding a couple other spots where there's...
Right. I, I just want to make sure, because the hole in the road was mentioned here tonight, and I wanted to make sure that council knew exactly what the hole in the road was, was caused from.
Yeah, Cleveland Water is going to fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're going to fix it with all the money from Clear Reads, and everybody paying double and triple. This is amazing to me that you can have such a big leak for months.
And now they, they actually found another issue there, so even when they're digging a basement, they're finding water coming through into, into the soil. So, it, it's just something that it's going to take some time maybe to fix.
A lot of failures.
Okay, thank you.
Failures.
Mike?
Thanks, ma'am.
From builders.
We have thirty-three new homes right now, sixty-one under construction, two-hundred-and-eighty-six point of sales to date, twenty new businesses into the city. We have some big projects still going on. I'll clave, the roads are complete, so you'll see those open up pretty soon, so we can start construction. That way, we have fire access in there, just in case there is a fire with one of the new homes going in there. This is Springs, working on the foundation and pouring footers. And we have another one that's going to be coming to planning commission. Dennis and I and the mayor and Nick have been working on it with them. It's GetGo. They're buying up at least three properties, so they're looking at buying up Days Inn, they're looking at the Mexican Restaurant, and then also the building that they existed, knocking them all down and creating one giant GetGo that's going to have a restaurant with it, with indoor and outdoor dining. The plans look really good so far, but we'll continue to work with them, and we hope to see them at the next planning commission. And that concludes my report.
And we can't even tell you to go look at one, because this will be a prototype.
It'd be the first one.
Yes. In Mastoni, good choice. Tim?
Mike, I have a question for you, since I'm on planning, and it's been brought up here tonight several times about the, the property on Valley View, and it's my understanding that the actual complaint that came in was not about a structure, that it was actually the debris in the property. And it's in the minutes of one of our planning meetings, and I, I was trying to pull it up to make sure that I was correct, but none of the planning meetings minutes are on here for two thousand and fourteen. But there were several of us that were at the planning meeting, and it was brought up that the actual complaint was not about a structure, it was about the stuff in his yard.
I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. Well, yeah, the minutes aren't here, so I couldn't look it up, but...
Yeah, we could, we can, we keep a complaint file.
And then also, it was also about a chicken coop, and it was not about a structure of the actual barn. I mean, I'm going to say it's a garage. Everybody's calling it a barn. It's a garage. It's a beautiful three-car garage. And the actual complaint that the neighbor made was about the property and the debris in the prop, on the property, and not the structure itself. And I just want to make that clear.
I think it, well, it's, it's not clear, because the original complaint was anonymous complaint. The neighbor made the exterior property.
Mm-hmm. But they never said nothing about the actual garage itself?
The original complaint was anonymous.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Anonymous.
Yes.
The complaint was made, but anonymous.
Yes.
All right. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to announce we received another federal grant from the Fire Act for thirty-eight thousand dollars for turnout gear. I'll be including that in my capital improvements for next year. Try to order it this year, get this year's prices, and take delivery of it early next year, and it'll be in my capital improvements request for next year, but for thirty-seven thousand dollars for turnout gear. So, that's it.
That's great. Good job. John?
I want to encourage everybody to check out our Facebook page. There's a lot of information there, Macedonia PD on Facebook. We are going to start up the Canine program. I don't know if it was mentioned before. We've got Sean Hathaway here, who's going to talk to the young lady from the News Leader, get some information, so check out the News Leader for more information. Name of the dog is Harrow. There's some pictures on our Facebook page of the dog. We've started in a fund for assistance in maintaining the program. No public money is used to purchase the dog and the training. That's all from court fines and fees that come back to the city, reference drug arrests and such. So, if you can, there's tons of information on Facebook. I'll keep it short today.
John's Facebook has been real busy, constantly. People are getting good information off that. I really don't know much about Facebook, but if you do, you would want to be on there checking out what John has. In fact, we just ran a survey about the conflict between a championship football game and Halloween, so what could be a championship?
A lot of information, a lot of dialogue going back and forth. I am no Facebook expert. It's, this is all Greek to me. I do my best with it. I have some folks that are a little better with it than I am, but there is a lot of information on there. I try to cover some things, some questions that come up, some of general knowledge stuff, and I just try to use it as an information source for the resident.
And that's a great thing to do.
Along with Nixol.
Yeah. Nixol and the Facebook, that's all way ahead of everybody else. All right, Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, at the last meeting, I mentioned to you guys that we were opening bids for the road program. We did open bids on September second. We had about six bid holders on our list before we opened bids. Of those six, four of them were contractors. Two of the six were publishers, like Builders Exchange, what have you, so we knew our max potential proposals that we would receive were four. Of the four, we only received two bids. The low bid came from Burton Scott paving contractor out of Geoga County at four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. The second bid was from Trimore, who has bid projects in town in the past. They were at four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, both of which were well above the engineer's published estimate for the project, which was three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, so...
So, what do we do now, then? Re-bid?
Rebid by law.
Throw out the proposals and throw them into next year's program?
But this isn't because council didn't take actions, it's because the bids came back higher than what we, what the engineer had estimated.
Yeah, they came in higher. I mean, it was late in the season. Historically, we bid things in the winter and spring. The feedback that I got out of contractors during the pre-proposal process, you know, there's a little bit of uncertainty. There's certainly, you know, opening bids in September is late. Is there still enough time to do the project? Yeah, the project wasn't, it's not a huge project. It's two streets. It could have been, but again, of the four that were on there, only two quoted. It's not, historically speaking, these types of programs, we usually average probably twice the amount of bid holders on our list pre-bid opening. And we usually, I think in the twenty-twelve road program, you got five proposals. Shepherd Hills Boulevard, we had six proposals. If you go back to South Freeway, you know, back in two thousand and eight, I think we had nine or ten proposals. So, yeah, two, two out of four is disappointing.
Sure.
It's disappointing, absolutely.
I think you definitely got a better price. Obviously, you know, if the compet, better competition will get us better prices.
Well, there might be some good out of the bad, in that next year, we're going to be going out for two more roads, and we'll have four roads, and maybe we can get even a better price and come back.
Bigger, bigger contract.
Because we'll do it at the proper time.
I'd just like to make a comment about that, because I went and reviewed exactly when we went out for bids, and I, I reviewed the ordinances that were passed regarding bids. And I'm telling you that, for one thing, we did not, we did not do road repairs in the worst of the recession, nine and ten, that we had, that we hadn't already funded before in the previous year. Number two, the, the budgets were always passed around the end of March, and the bids normally would have gone out sometime in late April. We had an opportunity to provide these, this information out there. We made the decision on June twelfth, and we did not have these bids returned until September second. That seems like an awfully long time to me, and I think that, you know, we don't know whether your estimate was high or low. We just don't know, because we didn't get to have a real sense of what this is going to be. I think we should go rebid and see what the situation is, and maybe you need to relook at the engineering estimate, because we did include those full-depth repairs, and was there a definitive list of full depth with what would be...
No.
Seagulls? How can we ask a contractor to bid?
That bid item wasn't really too erratic, and we, you can bid it both ways. You can put a, a specific list on there, or you can set up a quantity to be used as directed by the service director. Those prices were in line historically. Regarding, you know, legislation being passed in June and not opening bids until September, we weren't even authorized to start the engineering design until mid-July.
No, that's not true, sir. I saw the, I saw his...
I did not have a purchase order until middle of July.
Well, I certainly saw that you had the direction to go ahead on June twentieth, because I said, Mr. Latt sent that...
I cannot proceed without a purchase order.
Well, I understand you need a purchase order. That's an administrative issue, it's not mine.
That's exactly right, so stop.
So, let's, let's just say that...
It's administrative to do whatever we can to fix roads.
Right, I agree, and I...
And we can't do that unless we're funded.
We, you were funded on June twelfth. That's what I'm saying.
I have a question, Nick. Does engineering, your company, you pretty much know how much asphalt costs and the supplies you're going to need, so when you come to council with the exact cost of what it's going to cost to do something usually, because you come to us and tell us about what we're going to need, you, you know that already, because you know exactly what the, what the market holds for, for materials and so forth, and that's what we go by when you come before us and ask, tell us that this is about how much we're going to need, and then we...
Yeah, our, our estimates are based off of bid histories for labor and material.
Right. And you, and you have the current labor and material in Ohio here, correct?
Well, I mean, contractors...
I mean, engineering does?
Again, I have historical data based on projects that we bid for, for the city of Macedonia, projects that we bid for other clients, projects that ODOT bids, projects that the county, they're all over the place, but we have a pretty good idea what they usually are.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because, you know, I mean, in particular, we have software. When something, we go in and we, we do, we quote something for a customer, we already know what the material is. We know what, you know, how much the cost is for the material from Home Depot loads, and I'm just trying to use that as an example. So, as a contractor, when we go and do something, we already know, and we already have that software set up in our computer, and that we know when we go to give somebody a quote, we know exactly what we're looking at, the cost. Okay? So, I was just wondering, with GPD, when you come to us, you should already have pretty much exactly what it's going to cost to do these roads, so when you put it out for bids, usually you're usually in line. All of a sudden, this time, it came back so high, and I, I just wonder why, that, you know, these contractors are jacking up the price or something, you know? I don't know.
I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you what the price of oil is going to be next month. Some things are volatile. Usually, we're pretty, pretty accurate with the estimate for these types of projects. Again, I think it was the fact that it was later in the season.
Let me ask this question. I know that we underbid on that repair of Shepherd Hills Boulevard, because we ended up recovering, we had to recover out of sixty, seventy thousand dollars additional to complete that project properly. I think that, at this point, what we ought to be looking at is, we have full-depth repairs we need to do, we have roads we need to do. I certainly want to see the full-depth repairs go forward at the minimum, because that's just protecting our roads. And we've allocated the money, and I'm just thinking that we need to be working together to get this work done. Next year, personally, I think we should go back with, with a look at sharpening the pencil, looking at our engineering estimate to see why we're off, but if we can't do that, we ought to rebid it, and we'll see if we can do them this year.
Every single estimate since Nick's been here, we've come in under that.
No, that is not true. That is absolutely untrue. Shepherd Hills was not under.
So, it's the bottom line.
Shepherd Hills was not under, because we had to pay for right away, because you told the lady her lot was going to flood, and she wouldn't let us on that lot.
I did not tell anybody. Their lot was going to flood, and I wasn't...
Can I ask one quick question, then we can move on? Bottom line is the bids came in too high. They're more than the law allows, which means we have to rebid. I apologize. It's really cold up here. My sinuses are going crazy. So, we have to rebid, bottom line, and that's by law, and we got that confirmation, because And we got that confirmation because it used to be the law. It's still the law. So would we go out to bid now or would it be prudent to wait? Because Addison was in construction and you come to him now.
The earlier, the better. The earlier, the better. If we're going to piggyback it on next year's road program, obviously, we'd need, we'd need to wait until we have that dialogue and further direction from council. Again, I'm just looking at some dates, you know. Just to, just to recite this for, you know, for you to consider. South Freeway, we bid in December of 2008. That was for a 2009 season. Shepherd Hills Boulevard was built, we opened bids in September 2011 for an 11 and 12 construction season. 2012 resurfacing program, we opened at the beginning of June. And South Bedford Road, which we were able to get done last year, we opened on May 10th. So there's a little bit of variability in those bid opening dates, but anything that you can get set up so you can open before May, in my opinion, is better. The sooner you lock these contractors in and they've got their work set up for the year, the better prices you're going to get. I believe it will be more competitive.
Not only that, they produce more material in the dead of summer because people like ODOT tend to buy more and obviously producing involves, drives your cost down.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Joe?
No report, Mayor.
All right, is there any new business?
Mr. Mayor, 9/11 is a pretty significant date for me because I was in Washington DC, a quarter mile from the Pentagon, on 9/11. And some close friends and colleagues of mine were killed in the Pentagon. I'd like to just mention a couple of names that I worked with over a period of years. Lieutenant Colonel Gary Smith and Master Sergeant Max Belkey, who both are buried at the Pentagon in the area where the people who were killed on 9/11 are buried. I'm wearing the pin tonight that we received at that ceremony and there was a lot of weeping there. I can remember this. And the touch, the touching thing was all of the parents and children who were there and all of the other leaders who were there. And I want to say today, we have had a long time since that happened, but no one has forgotten and no one thinks that this is over with yet. So just honor everybody who was involved in this. Thank you.
Any other new business?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
What are we talking about?
What are we doing?
Yeah, what is it?
It's executive session. I can't tell you why. The mayor asked me to make that motion.
She did, she did mention to discuss personnel.
There's two reasons why you go in legis.
Three.
Litigation and personnel.
Three, actually, but.
I, I would recommend you guys do it. You can choose not to, but I'd recommend it.
Who is going to be involved in this?
Only us, me and Betsy. Betsy's here.
Betsy is from Human Resource.
She's our HR gal. So I have a motion. I have a second.
Am I ready for roll call? I'm ready.
Okay.
Ms. Darryl? Yes. Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
I don't think we should go into executive session without having some forewarning. No.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go into executive session, after which we'll only come out and adjourn. So basically, the meeting's over. Thank you all for coming.
Hey, Chuck. Chuck?
Sure.
It's freezing in here, so I'm going to ask you to come over.
That guy, you know, that guy's talking about that cat. That system is so, it's so old. It's a bad system.
Yeah.
And, and it's not even in the street. It's in the yard. And my guy's worked, I'm going to jump up there because he's not telling me what's really going on.
Yeah. If they're not out.